All right, I'd like to call the Pasadena City Council Meeting Order, May the 17th, 2016. If we will all stand please, the invocation be given by former Mayor and Councilmember Jack Douglas, and the pledge allegiance by Councilmember McCary Bass.
Join me in prayer, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, come to you with thankful hearts for your many, many blessings and for your watch care over us and for goodness to God to us. Come to you, thank you for this time we have to do the city business, pray to be the councilman, even wisdom and knowledge to do the work that needs to be done. Thank you for your love. We pray for our country. We pray for our armed forces, for their safety, and for their families. And we pray for the will, to do your will, and share Christ with other people, of course, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jack.
I would say, would you please take your hat off as we say pledge allegiance to the United States of America, but it looks like everybody's done it. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
God forbid we laugh.
I'm just repeating what you said. That's close enough. Okay, Council, Councilmember Bass.
Good evening. How are you guys doing tonight? It looks like we've got a full house. I see one seat up front. If you want to move forward, you can. There'll be questions afterwards. Thank you for coming tonight, and it looks like we're going to have a great council tonight. The weather has finally quit raining, and maybe it's going to be pretty, and the humidity will go away. Thank you all for coming. I'll pass.
Councilmember Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I just got back from Washington, DC. I was there for Police Week, which every year, May 15th is Police Memorial Day. And I went there for the national ceremonies. And Congressman Babin welcomed me, along with 21 other officers, including Pasadena officers, in his office. And he was very nice of having us there, and he was very nice of what he said. So I want to thank him for that, and with that, I pass.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Wagner.
Hello. The primary elections are having runoffs this week. This is to pick the representatives who will be on the ballot in November. If you voted in the primary, then in the runoff, you have to vote for the same party. If you did not vote in the primary election, you can vote in the runoff. Voting, early voting this week will be at Kyle Chapman and John Phelps Courthouses. That's through Friday, May 20th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Election Day is Tuesday, May 24th. For that, you need to really check the location, because it will be different locations depending on the party, and a lot of precincts will be combined. Pasadena Hurricane Workshop will be Saturday, June 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Convention Center. At 1:00 p.m., the featured speaker will be Tim Heller from Channel 13, who will do the Heller High Water Forecast. Harris County is having a series of property tax workshops, including how to protest your appraisal. There's a list of locations online. The closest one will be at the East Harris County Activity Center at 7340 Spencer on Wednesday, May 25th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. Most of the, what they're having is a weekday morning, but they do have something on a Saturday. It's a bit of a drive. Happy birthday to Linda Rorick. That's on Saturday. And congratulations to our city planning director, Teresa Vasquez-Evans, who was recently elected to the KEMA City Council.
I've already given her my condolences. But yes, she was. Councilmember Weber.
I just want to thank former Councilmember Mayor Jack Douglas for the invocation. He's looking good. Doesn't age at all. And also, as Councilmember Wagner said, it is National Police Week, so don't forget those police officers, police officers that have died in the line of duty over the years. And with that, I pass.
Councilmember Bruce Lehman.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting this evening. There's a group of young men up here in the front I'd like to introduce. They're from Arrow 404 Robotics Team. And Samuel Charbula lives here in Pasadena. All these young men are homeschooled, and let me tell you a little bit about what they've done. They've competed in several competitions here in Texas. National, they qualified in a national competition to go to the World Championship in St. Louis, where they just returned from, I think, about a week ago. Now, they didn't win the World Championship, but these young men, I believe this is their second year to compete, so I'm sure in the future, they're going to come out on top. But I'd like for each one of you to stand up and introduce yourself, and if the mayor will permit, maybe say a little something about the robot you brought.
Would you maybe stand up and look into this camera right here and give us your name, rank, and serial number? But, and then who's going to be the speaker? We'd like to hear from you. That's quite a robot you've got there. All right, y'all, come on, stand up and come around here. I want you in front of the camera. If you'll place that camera right there, then it'll be, we'll get it, we'll get it on U.S. World News.
Hi, I'm Samuel Charbula.
I'm Nick Bellvis.
I'm Enrico Brunel.
Look back here, I think.
Yeah, maybe look back here in the back, where there's a live cameraman.
There you go.
You know what? Even better than this, I don't think it's going to pick up your voice. Why don't each one of you walk over there and say it into the microphone, so we can get your name? Just go to the microphone.
Draw straws, but head over there.
We're organized here in this council chamber.
I'm Samuel Charbula.
I'm Enrico Brunel.
My name is Ryan Cummings.
My name is Joel Klup.
I'm Cameron Host.
My name is Joshua Phillips.
And I'm Nick Bellvis.
And who's going to be the spokesman? And tell us what's in front of us here.
We hadn't known we were going to say anything, but...
Can you speak up extremely loud? That microphone needs to pick you up.
Okay, I'll tell you a bit about what we are supposed to do. There's a challenge that we had to, we had to have the robot compete on a field, and not as in attacking other robots. It was opposed to completely different challenges, such as picking up blocks and cue, and balls. It also had to reach up and hang on a bar, and this is actually pretty difficult to design a robot from scratch and program it to do all this. And so, we did, we have this mechanism here, which is actually a tape measure, which we use to hang on the top, on a bar, which is about four feet, four or five feet high. And then we also have this arm here, which is you. We have this arm which we use to lift up and move around, to pick up the different blocks and balls, so we can then move them into scoring areas to score different points. You can open, can you demonstrate that?
Yeah. This stream isn't getting messed up again. Sometimes it does that.
Many of these parts are 3D printed, this bucket here, this hook. And we also have these, they're fingered on the side, which move out to push down triggers, which are also a way of scoring points. And we also did much work on our wheels, because they have to climb over some terrain on the field, which can be difficult.
Very cool.
Wow. How long did it take you all to come up with this idea?
We started it last year.
It was mid-September.
Mid-September.
Yes, we began, we began last September, and I've been working on it, modifying it after every competition since then.
And when do you expect to have it in Toys R Us?
We're not sure.
It's hard to get in touch with the owners.
We'll send them a tape. Thank you all very much, and you're to be commended for what you've done. If you all need to leave for any reason, to get home before 8 o'clock, but you're more than welcome to stay here at the council meeting if you'd like, but if you all would like to leave now, it would be the appropriate time, if you need to, if you have a curfew.
And I had one, one more thing I wanted to mention. I want to wish my wife Sylvia a happy anniversary. We were married on this day 41 years ago.
Well, I would say you did very well. Councilmember Wheeler.
Casados.
I mean, Casados, I'm sorry. Yeah, I already checked you off, but you...
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. That was quite a presentation. I know that a lot of work goes into those kind of robots, and my son is in junior high, does the robotics in school, and it's pretty intense with the kind of stuff they have them doing, so I have no clue how that thing works, trust me. But thanks for, for the Boy Scouts for coming out, and I'd like to make, let everybody know that the Deepwater Neighborhood Association is having their meeting this Thursday at 6:30 at the Texas Monterey Grill. And also, this Saturday, the 21st, they'll be having a garage sale to raise money to help improve the neighborhood. With that, I'll pass.
Councilmember Wheeler.
I wanted to welcome the Boy Scouts, and thank you for coming to council meeting. Also, I want to recognize former Mayor Jack Douglas. I also want to say that this past Saturday, the American Legion had its division conference. We had, we had American Legion members from all over the state, specifically east Texas, coming down here. So if you saw some American Legion members running around eating our restaurants, experiencing our city, that's what that was about. But they had a great convention. I'm glad they chose Pasadena to host it here. They had a great time, so American Legion continues to do great things. Also, one of my high school friends, Sergeant Ridings, who's now a Pasadena police officer, was, was recently promoted to supervisor. So it's great to see some high school friends doing so well here in the city, because the Pasadena Police Department is, it's tough, it's very professional, so you know he's doing an outstanding job. Also, want to commend Bruce Lehman on 41 years, and having known Bruce for the last three years and seen him several times a month, I want to commend his wife for putting up on himself the 41 years. And with that, I'll pass.
Now, have I got everybody? Have I missed anybody? I lost track watching this, this robot thing. Linda, Saturday, another year younger. Congratulations to you. And Bruce, to you and Sylvia, both 41 years. Wow. We know she is certainly going to heaven when she passes away, because she's had hell on earth. But congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, gets us down to, we have an executive in our midst tonight, Roger Gunther, Port of Houston. Roger, did you want to speak? Did you bring a check with you?
This is, this is the big cheese at the Port of Houston, so you think he's got some responsibility?
My goodness, Roger.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I, I'm big, I know that. But thank you, and good evening, and thanks for letting me have the opportunity to come say a few words and talk about the Port of Houston. I know it's probably been a while since the Port of Houston Authority has come here, and I think we need to do it more often to let you and the city council and the citizens know what we have going on. And it's, it's, it's great, so I'm going to give you just a brief update about the port, because it is your port, it's our port, it's all of ours' port, and it's important to all of us. But I first want to thank you for your leadership on our port commission through your Commissioner Roy Meese, who I've gotten to know very well over the last couple of years, and he continues to provide the guidance to me and to the staff and other commissioners, not only in, in the business side of it, but in the community as well. So we appreciate his leadership, and he's always there to give a good advice when we need it. And that goes for all, whether I need it or not. But, and that goes for our Chairman, Janice Longoria, and all of our commissioners who do that on a volunteer effort and provide us good guidance. And it's good to be here in Pasadena. I grew up on the east side, I grew up in Baytown, and I'm really excited to, this weekend, bring my family to the Strawberry Festival, to some concert that my daughter wants to go see Friday night, so we're excited about that. The Port of Houston continues to be successful and serving as one of the world's busiest ports. It's one of the busiest waterways, and it is the busiest waterway in the nation, and it is the economic engine for this region, and continues to grow, especially on the east side of town. The, the growth in some of the businesses and jobs that are created in warehouses and things associated with goods that move through the port continue to grow on the east side of town, in Pasadena, in the Bayport region, and all around. Just a little highlight, I think it's good for people to know about how big the economic impact is of the Houston Ship Channel and the Greater Port of Houston. We just did a recent economic impact study, and the annual impact of the Port of Houston and the Greater Houston Ship Channel is $265 billion in economic impact to the state. Just to quantify that, that's 16% of the gross domestic product of the state of Texas occurs here in this region. It's responsible for 1.2 million jobs, direct and indirect jobs, just in the state of Texas alone. And that's an increase of about 150,000 from the last time we did this economic impact study in 2011. So the Port Authority continues to grow. It contributes to Texas as still being the top exporting state in the nation. It's been that way for the last 13 years. And we continue to invest. Our container terminals at Bayport, which is in Pasadena and Pasadena Industrial District, and Barberscutt combined handled over 2 million TEUs in 2015. That's 20-foot equivalent units in one year, and that is expected to continue to grow at a rapid pace, pace over the next several years, just in, in exporting some of the petrochemical products that are produced here, as well as the increase in some of the business coming through the newly expanded Panama Canal from Asia into Houston, which is going to contribute to jobs and business and more investments in the region. I could go all wrong, all day long, but I just wanted to come here and say, we're here. If you ever need anything for us, we're here, we appreciate the contributions. I believe you are all invited, or will be invited. Commissioner Steve Doncarlos, who represents the Harris County Mayor's, has an annual boat ride on the MB Sam Houston. I think that's in late June. He does it two different days for the mayors and council members. And if you get a chance and never done that, you ought to join, as well as to the public. This, this Sam Houston is a public boat ride that we have. It runs twice a day, except for Monday and Tuesday, and it's free. It's a 90-minute boat tour up and down the channel. It's a great way to get out there and see what the Houston Ship Channel's about, because it truly, I would venture to say, most of us in this room are touched by some of the activities that go on the Houston Ship Channel. We really don't realize it all the time. So anyway, thank you for your time, thank you for your support. Glad to be a part of this community, and we'll be around if you need us.
Roger, thank you very much, and you were a great appointment.
Thank you.
Shows the wisdom of the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming by tonight. We appreciate that. Jody Quinn?
I don't know if I can hear. I know this probably isn't the right place to bring this up, but I wanted to talk about my personal problems, about unsafe buildings with the city. I, I've been trying to resolve the problem, but I had problems with the plumbing company. I had air care southeast come out to my house, and they did decap up at the story line thing correctly on both properties. And I tried to have them come back, and I had all kinds of problems. They finally didn't come, they finally came back on April 26th, that's just passed, and they capped up the third at the correct, at the correct place, and then the city inspected on the 20th, and they finally passed. So I'm asking if I can have more time to resolve the problems, you know, to demolish the building, since I had the problems with that plumbing company. I know that I'll be notified again to take care of the problems, but I'm requesting time and, and more time and letting the city aware of why I haven't been able to do much of anything because of the problems that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. George Tater?
I wasn't born in Pasadena, but I got here when I was two days old, so I guess I got here as quick as I could. And in a month or so, that'll be 70 years, and I guess I've only had to come in and complain one time in 70 years. It's pretty good reflection on the city in which I live. My, the problem I have is, I'm a fence-lined neighbor to what was the Queen's School, and they have moved the Queen's School and they built a Nelda Sullivan School. The problem is, behind the Nelda Sullivan School, they put two 225-ton train air conditioning chiller units that have 24 exhaust fans on. The noise level on them, when they're in a dehumidification, dehumidification stage, is like a jet engine taking off. I complained to the school, they put a chain-link fence up. I complained again, they put privacy slats in the fence. I complained again, and they said we'd put a noise blanket up. But the problem is, is the fence is four foot lower than the exhaust fans. According to the manufacturer, any noise abatement has to be three foot higher than the exhaust fans. So when I mentioned that, they said, well, I guess we won't do the fence. The manufacturer's handbook says that in a residential area, it needs to be a cinder block fence insulated. And when I, I've talked from the code enforcement, to the council people, to the school board, and the school board, or the school district says, well, maybe our engineers can figure out what to do. And I said, well, how about what the manufacturer's installation guide said? And I'm only bringing this up because I realize in a way, it's a school system problem, but on the other way, the code enforcement says if there's a nuisance, the city is responsible for abating nuisances. The woman two houses down from me had to move because it aggravated her migraine headache so bad, she couldn't stand it. There are nights when you have to put your head under the pillow to abate the noise, and it's just, it's just not right that, you know, you shouldn't be able to... I, I used to like sitting on my back porch in the evening, read a book or something. You can't even do that anymore, because the noise is just too loud. And if there's something the city can do through code enforcement to encourage the school to do what the manufacturer suggests on installing an air conditioner in a residential area, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Gets us down to item 8A, President's Proclamation Awards, a Boy Scout troop donation. You can take the time.
Hi, my name's Michelle Blunt. I'm with the Parks and Recreation Department, the Multi-Purpose Recreation Center for People with Disabilities. I'm here to present a plaque to Andrew Hudson and Troop 268. Andrew worked for his Eagle project at the Multi-Purpose Center. Andrew and his troop donated hundreds of dollars worth of supplies, rentals of machines, and valuable time to make a bocce court for the Multi-Purpose Center to use by individuals with disabilities. If you don't know what bocce is, it's similar to bowling, and it's played outside on a very long court made of wood and stands in the middle of it. It's a very popular sport among people with cognitive and physical disabilities, so we're very thankful for them. So at this time, I'd like to present a plaque to Andrew and his troop for their time and efforts to benefit the lives of people with disabilities.
Yeah, sure, we can take a picture. Yeah, we'd like to. If you want to bring the troop up here, line up for promise. Council, just to turn the position. If anybody needs to leave again... Oh, wait, wait, hold on just a minute, Scouts. Hold on a second. We're not through with you all yet. We want to get you on the camera, so who's going to be the speaker for this group? Would you come up to the mic and speak, and I'd like to get the, all the scouts up there and give us their name and rank?
My name is Chuck Raper. I'm scout master for Boy Scout Troop 268 out of Deer Park.
My name is Jack Whistle, and I'm the assistant scout master for Troop 268.
My name is Andrew Hudson. I'm a life scout working on getting my eagle.
My name is Sean Blackman. I'm a life scout as well, and I am also working on my eagle scout.
Wow.
My name is Alexis Perez, and I'm working on my second-class scout.
My name is, my name is Jeremy Com, and I'm a star scout. Life.
My name is Aiden Schremermeister, and I'm working on my first class.
My name's Ali Tussla, and I'm working on my star scout.
My name is Hunter Dennis, and I'm working on life.
My name is Brayden Lawton, and I'm working on first class.
My name's Brayden Law, and I'm working for first class.
My name is Vincent Vasquez, and I am working for first class.
My name is Kane and Leonard, and I'm working for first class.
My name is Scott Stagg, and I am working for first class.
My name's Dana McFall, and I'm working on life.
Well, congratulations, and thank you very much for what you're doing for... Thank you all for coming. Yeah. Working on their eagle, my goodness.
Takes a lot, a lot of work.
It takes a lot of work. I mean, yes, it does. You boys? Okay, Council, gets us down to the minutes of May the 3rd. Motion. Motion by Councilmember Weber.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler. Minutes be approved, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. Post. Motion carries. Progress payments, 13A through J.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Lehman.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados. Progress payments be approved, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. Post. Motion carries. Finance Resolution 2710.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Weber.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler. Finance Resolution 2710 be approved, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I abstain from anything in regards to Bass, Maniki.
Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, those opposed. Motion carries. Personnel changes 15A and C.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lehman. Personnel changes be approved as they're in discussion. All those in favor, those opposed. Motion carries. Under appointments, I'd like to nominate at this time, A is the local health authority for the City of Pasadena, Edon Turner, M.D. B is Planning and zoning Commissioner Mary Ann Klusman. C is Community Development Advisory Board Linda Garcia and Brenda Pitchard.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Lehman. Second by Councilmember Bass. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Under the Community Development Board, we are looking for, at least right now, someone else to serve on the board. We want to get to seven. We're at six with one member soon to be retiring. So if you have any interest, please contact your council member, contact me. If you look like, or you feel like giving back to the community.
Absolutely right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Gets down to mayor's report, final reading. Madam Secretary, you may read them on the consent agenda.
Did you want me to read through 70, correct? Or read through 70 and vote 71?
Oh, yeah. Skip 71, that's right.
Ordinance 2016-54, franchise to HSC Pipeline Partnership LLC for 6-inch petroleum products pipeline. Ordinance 2016-66, contract with IKLO Construction for construction of the new pet adoption center, Ordinance 2016-67, contract with Southwest Signal Supply Inc. for traffic signal flasher project at our station number five, $89,110. Ordinance 2016-068, contract with K&amp;K Tractor Service LLC for demolition of four dangerous buildings, $11,900. Ordinance 2016-69, annual contract with Municipal Emergency Services Inc. for purchase of SCOTC self-contained breathing apparatus and accessories. Ordinance 2016-70, annual contracts with Patterson Vet Supply and HSB Veterinary Supplies Inc. for purchase of veterinary pharmaceuticals and medical supplies.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wagner. Second by Councilmember Yubara. That ordinance is 2016-54, 66, 67, 68, 69, and 70 pass on. Second and final reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-71, an ordinance clarifying designation of city council member districts and at-large positions for city elections.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wagner.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bass. That ordinance 2016-071. Is there any discussion? All councilmember.
The way things were put in the charter based on the ballot wording is confusing. And clarifying that is good. However, to completely replace the wording in the charter because council doesn't like the way the charter is worded is not a good thing. It sets a bad precedent. We need to include the charter wording and clarification. I move to amend ordinance 2016-071 on second reading by amending section two to read, in future elections for council members, places A to F will be designated on the ballot as Districts A to F, Place G will be designated on the ballot as at-large position one, parentheses, Place G, and Place H will be designated as at-large position two, parentheses, Place H, thereby making the ballot clear to voters that they may vote for three representatives.
Motion fails for lack of a second. Gets us back to ordinance 2016-071. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
All those in favor? Those opposed?
No. Discussion to speak.
Okay.
I just want to say that I wasn't here last council meeting, but I was against the whole at-large system, so I'll be voting against this particular ordinance here.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilmember. Two votes in the poll, motion passes. Gets down to round the first reading.
Ordinance 2016-73, purchase of radios, equipment, and associated accessories from Motorola Inc., $199,361.85.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bass. That ordinance 2016-73 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-74, application and agreement with Office of the National Drug Control Policy for a grant in the amount of $65,840 for cost of high-intensity drug trafficking areas program.
Motion.
Second. By Councilmember Lehman. Second by Councilmember Wheeler. That ordinance 2016-74 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-75, amending ordinance number 2014-159, franchise to Enterprise Crude Pipeline LLC for 24-inch crude pipeline, Valero Lateral Pipeline.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Yubara. Second by Councilmember Wheeler. That ordinance 2016-75 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-76, contract with Vigilant Solutions for purchase of licensed flight recognition system, $73,240.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lehman. Ordinance 2016-76 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-77, agreement for assignment and assumption of emergency ambulance service from ETMC EMS to Acadian Ambulance Service of Texas LLC.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Van Hout. That ordinance 2016-77 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
This ordinance here is to transfer the contract that the City of Pasadena has with ETMC. You see around town, there are the turquoise and white ambulances. This service is now being transferred to Acadian Ambulance Service. We have been assured that the service is of the same quality, the same number of ambulances will be operating with the same qualifications, the same certifications. So if you see a change in ambulances here in the near future, this is why. The reason that Acadian Ambulance is able to continue to service whereas ETMC is not is that they have already operated locally, and they'll be able to draw on those resources to make their work more efficient. So I'll be voting in favor of this.
You're exactly right. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I would just like to say, I've heard Acadian, they seem to be a good ambulance service. I believe they're very strong in Louisiana. They operate out of Webster, they're Bear County. I think they're retaining 90% of the employees from ETMC, so I'll be voting for this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-78, an ordinance to rescind, ordinance number 2014-121, a contract with Terracotta Consultants, Inc. for materials, testing services for various projects.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Yubara.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lehman. That ordinance 2016-78 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-79, Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Emerson Process Management.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Bass. Second by Councilmember Wagner. That ordinance 2016-79 pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
First of all, I want to recognize Emerson. They've been a longstanding company here in Pasadena, and I want to thank them for that. And right now, they're wanting to expand their facilities here in Pasadena, and ultimately, I hope they choose to do that. I hope they choose Pasadena, continue operating here. I think we've had a good relationship. Pasadena has much to provide in the way of emergency service, police, fire, roads, infrastructure with drainage, water, everything else. What this ordinance is doing is it's asking that over a 10-year span, the City of Pasadena, essentially through tax abatements, give Emerson $1.4 million. On top of that, our Economic Development Board, Second Century, will be giving them $168 million in order to build a new facility here.
$168,000.
$168,000, I'm sorry. $168,000.
Don't get them that idea.
In addition to that, while they're building, we will give them, if they buy materials here in Pasadena, we will do away with their tax rate up to 1%, so they won't be paying taxes on materials on 1% here in Pasadena. The issue I have with this is over this past year, we have set the tax rate at a point where with property inflation, citizens here in Pasadena have paid more in property taxes. We just got done last month raising water rates by 15% and set them to raise every year thereafter. I do not think it's fair to the citizens of Pasadena that we're asking them to pay more while at the same time asking large companies to pay less and just giving them money. In addition, and not only is it not fair to the citizens of Pasadena, but it's not fair to other businesses, other businesses that are looking to expand, other businesses that are already operating here. I do believe that if you want to be a part of this community, you should pay taxes at the same rate as everyone else. Furthermore, there is, we were told they will make a best effort to hire citizens from Pasadena, and I do appreciate that. But the fact of the matter is, there's no guarantee. So even after $1.4 million in tax abatement and $168,000 in taxes being directly handed over to them, they cannot guarantee one person from Pasadena will be hired. And like I said before, Emerson's a great company, and I hope y'all ultimately choose to stay here, but I do not think this is a fair deal for citizens or for other businesses. I would vote no against this.
Is there any other discussion? Well, let me just say that this is a good deal for the City of Pasadena. We will be receiving, what, $1.4 million? After their building is completed on the tax rate, and otherwise it'd just be on the land. Is any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I just don't have a really good feeling about this. When I first got this, I wondered, why is the city giving so much money when there's the enterprise zone where the state would give money rather than the city? And I was told that that wasn't done because it takes a long time to process that. The land where this is going, somebody is going to build there. We are looking at, this area is going to have a lot of expansion in the next few years as far as business, particularly stuff close to the port. Somebody's going to build, and we're going to be making tax money off of that. One thing I asked about is why the city is putting out all of this when the school district taxes are actually higher? And I was told Pasadena ISD doesn't do rebates, LaPorta ISD does. This falls under Deer Park ISD. Even though it's in Pasadena, it's in the part that is under Deer Park ISD, and no one has checked with them to see if they would help cover some of this. And I think this is just too much coming out of the city when something's going to build and not everybody is benefiting from this type of thing.
Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
In regards to Emerson, they're already here, they're on Spencer, I believe. They're looking to relocate. They're going to move to about a 23-acre plot. The City of Pasadena is looking for about a $1.4 million increase. We have raw land there. The company's going to build on it. I'm for the betterment of Pasadena. Yes, it could be, but I think you have bird in hand, bird in the bush. I want the bird in the hand right now. They're in competition. We have the City of Houston, we have the City of Baytown, that's looking at these folks. In fact, they're offering a better tax abatement than Pasadena is, but still Emerson wants to look at Pasadena. It's a 50-50 split. The city's going to have skin in it, and so is Emerson. So I'll be voting for this measure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilmember, three members vote no. Yubara?
No.
Two, three, four. That's one, two, three, four. So it's four to four. There's no action tonight, but we will see this again very shortly. Okay, gets us down to resolutions.
Resolution 2016-48, extended grant from the State of Texas Automobile Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority for $82,998.
That's 48?
Yes, sir.
Okay. entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados. That resolution 2016-48 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-49, quarterly compiled financial statements for three months ended December 31st, 2015.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bass. That resolution 2016-49 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-50, donation of softball bats and softballs valued at $750 from the National Wheelchair Softball Association for the Wheelchair Softball Program.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Casados.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler. That resolution 2016-50 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-51, grant application to U.S. Department of Justice for the bulletproof vest partnership grant funds.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Lehman. Second by Councilmember Van Hout. That resolution 2016-51 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-52, a memorandum of understanding with Charles Eugene Cowles, Jr., M.D., MBA for providing medical direction for tactical emergency medics.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Yubara.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler. That resolution 2016-52 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to thank Dr. Cowles for putting this together.
Yes, you're right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-53, a resolution supporting alternative one, CR number one, of the Gulf Coast Community Protection and Recovery District Storm Surge Suppression Study, and opposing alternative number two, CR number two of that study.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados. That resolution 2016-53 pass as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-54, amending resolution number 2016-046 relating to Central Port Vice Substituting Houston Division for all references to Texas Coast Division.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Casados.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Van Hout. That resolution 2016-54 be adopted as it was read.